Hi, good evening ladies and gentlemen and welcome to the July 17th, 2018 School Committee Meeting here at 7:00 PM at Tingsboro High School. I officially call this meeting to order. We will start with introductions.
Chair Dervings.
Rob Mullen.
Good evening, Julie Gostucci.
Evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tenerella.
Ryan McMahon.
Paul Mitchell.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Sophia Campbell.
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. If I could get a motion to approve the June 12th, 2018 School Committee Minutes and the Executive Session Minutes, Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
Make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 5-0-0. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take 8D out of order. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries 5-0-0.
Mr. Chair, 8D is the elementary school culvert update. I know we've been talking about this for six years. So we're fortunate enough that Assistant Town Minister Justin Salzback is here tonight to kind of walk us through where we are in the process and where we're going from this point forward. So we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair. Just to kind of give you a quick background, my name is Justin Salzback. I'm Assistant Town Administrator for the town. This first kind of took off in 2011 when the town administrator at that point was Michael Gilberto, applied for a hazard mitigation grant. He applied again in 2012 and then 2013, we actually were awarded the grant. So the way it breaks down, it's a 75-25% split. So that comes to about 92%, or 92,000 from FEMA with the remainder coming from the town. The culvert leading into the elementary school is inadequate, I think to say the least. And there's been a history of kind of overflows particularly during stormy seasons. So we're trying to fix that issue by replacing the current 30-inch culvert that exists with a seven-foot-by-four-foot box culvert. So when the grant was originally awarded to us in 2013, we had three years to complete it. That brings us to 2016, for those of you keeping track at home. So we had two one-year extensions from that point. We're now at the back end of our second, or two one-year extensions, or the back end of our second one-year extension, meaning September 15th upcoming is when the funds are set to expire again. MEMA and FEMA have made it clear that they have no intentions to provide any other extension. So we're trying to really push this one through. The bid estimate from the engineer brought the cost up to about 146,000. We put it out to bid. R Bates &amp; Sons got the low bid for 137. They're on the Mass Stop pre-qualification list for bridges and culverts and working in waterways. So at this point, we're trying to coordinate with MEMA, FEMA, our engineer, and Mass DEP to make sure that the current design put forward by the engineer meets stream crossing standards for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That is kind of a fluid process. So we haven't had an opportunity to really nail down a date. And the reason that I'm coming today is just to kind of get you up to speed, put it on your radar, and let you know that when we do have kind of all of these pieces in one spot, we're going to have to kind of hit the ground running. The obvious date that's probably looming in your mind is the start date for school. So that's something that we're also pretty conscious of, and we want to make sure that, you know, we do this with as little disruption to students, faculty, and staff as possible, while still trying to meet that September 15th deadline. So if anyone has any questions, I'm an open book.
So just two points of order as well. Just Ryan Guthrie will be involved in the process, the planning process, representing the schools moving forward at this point. And I know, you know, in terms of financial side of this, we apportioned or appropriated $84,000 of our remediation funding back in 2016. We kind of held that in reserve for this project. And it looks like that entire 84,000 won't be expended on this project. So there's a potential of some 40-odd thousand dollars of remediation money still being available to the schools, at which point, after a conversation with Mr. Guthrie, we look to, we'll need to address some exterior doors and some additional roofing issues at the elementary school. So that certainly welcome 40,000. But I think the other important factor is the road itself won't be completely shut down. It'll be brought down to a single lane with steel plates, making it available for students to pass, whether students are starting double sessions or whatever at the elementary school. Certainly that would be nightmarish if it were the first day of school with the amount of drop-offs and kindergarten and whatnot. But I think if we work strategically with the town and the engineers and everything, I think we can come up with a better plan so we don't impact at the start of the school year. So I just wanted to add those caveats.
We, if it is being worked on, can we put the buses through the back way?
So that's problematic because you would need honestly a police detail at each end of that access road. That access road is a blind spot made for one single passage only. So we could potentially get traffic going in one way but not coming out the other way.
So just for buses though, it wouldn't have traffic going through there?
So it's certainly something we could look at. I know it's not ideal, I know it's not what we want to do, rerouting the buses through Diamond and Emerald and that neighborhood there. But I think, you know, as Ryan is being on that committee, working with Justin, that, you know, if that needs to be a conversation we'll have, we'll certainly bring it back to the school committee and say, this is what we need to do.
And if I may, that's something that's on the table but only is an absolute last resort. And as the superintendent said, that's something we'll coordinate well in advance, once we have a better idea of what we're kind of looking at in terms of construction time.
If I'm not mistaken, that would add almost 10 minutes to each bus as well. So we'd have to coordinate that with the bus company.
That would be my concern, is that if we have to have a traffic cop at the restriction going into the school, if we can get just the buses to sort of make the loop and get in and get out, that would be...
Yeah. I think everything's on the table at this point until we meet with the contractor, but that's certainly a valid question. And I think, if I understand correctly, the road will only be open for three or four days max. Does that sound right?
Correct. So we're still trying to narrow down some aspects of it, and the plan's not fully set. But as it's written right now, ideally, the road will only be open for about three or four days. As the superintendent said, steel plated, alternating on either sides, which will be fine for just normal pedestrian vehicular traffic, but might be a problem for buses. So potentially, it would look like maybe starting a Friday night, working through the weekend, and then maybe having to reroute the buses on a Monday, and then back to normal on a Tuesday. But it's, you know, a lot of moving parts right now.
So now, is the contract out to bid? Is everything...
So it went out to bid and it came back with R Bates &amp; Sons for 137,000. So we couldn't even really coordinate the specifics with them until we had, you know, the procurement process to kind of go through the whole, you know, public vetting. So at this point in time, we are coordinating with them. But to be honest, we can't move forward with them until we have a confirmation from Mass DEP that the design is adequate. So it's, there's a lot of moving parts.
On the money available, when's the drop dead date?
So it's September 15th. My understanding from talking with members of MEMA is that FEMA has no intention of extending that deadline. That doesn't mean it's impossible, it's just something we shouldn't rely on.
And does the people at Mass DEP understand that?
Yes.
Do our congressional people understand that?
I'm not sure if they understand much of anything sometimes, but we'll see.
You said that on an open mic. But that's the only other thing that I would recommend, is to just give them a heads-up if there's somebody...
Everyone's on the same page.
So you said this is the second one-year extension?
Exactly. So there's the initial three-year period that we were awarded for, then we had a one-year extension, now we're in the second one-year extension.
Well, it would take till the end of five years to do it.
Sure. So one of the larger issues, among others, is administrative turnover. The project kind of would make it so far, and then, you know, Michael Gilberto turned into Kurt Belvance, turned into Matt Hanson. So that's obviously kind of an institutional struggle. Beyond that, running into engineering issues. We already had one engineer onboard two years ago that fell through. They got halfway through it. It's a very complex project. They kind of stalled and then just gave up on it. So now we're with lease engineering here in Tingsboro, and we're pretty committed to getting the ball over the goal line this time around. But it's pretty complex. There's a lot of opportunities for failure, unfortunately, with a project like this. So I think if we can get it through and get it done, we'll be pretty grateful.
There was also a question as to whether or not enlarging this culvert would actually cause flooding further down Frost Road and so on at one point. So I know that was trying to tie the two projects together. I don't know what they ever did with that, or if it's still a concern.
So it's an ongoing concern. It's something we're talking about with Mass DEP. But it really depends on who you talk to in that organization on any given year. And it's, you know, things are constantly changing in terms of standards and compliance as well. So, you know, we could get two years into planning, then all of a sudden, the rules change, and you have to kind of scrap it and start over. So this is definitely the furthest we've gotten. And like I said, I'm pretty committed to getting this one done, so I don't want to let this fish get away.
So you have the lead on this?
What's that?
You have the lead on this project?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Justin.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions?
I think it needs to be done. You know, if it's going to take, you said it's going to be two or three days?
It would be two to three days, potentially three to four with the road open. But total, there may be up to 30 days of staging off to the side, but it wouldn't impact traffic realistically.
Two to three days of traffic impact and...
Correct.
And hopefully, that would be a Monday, Tuesday kind of thing, if we had it Friday to, Friday afternoon to Monday.
So does it have to be totally completed by the 15th, or can it be in process?
So it has to be 100% completed with funds expended. So we would actually have to cut that last check on the 15th.
A little crunch into it.
It's a tight one.
Yeah.
Well, Dr. Flanagan and I went to the Board of Selectmen meeting last Monday night, where Justin presented this to them. They fully supported it, and Justin volunteered to come here this evening to answer any of our questions. So thank you, Justin, for that. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
And thanks for trying to get this done for us. This is huge.
It is.
So thank you.
Great. Have a good night. Thanks.
I'd like to take 9A out of order also.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take 9A out of order.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 5-0-0.
Mr. Messina.
Mr. Messina.
Thank you. We have our district manager, Scott Barry, from Woodsons tonight, as well as our food service director, Tracy DeMarest, here. If you both want to come up to the hot seats. They will be giving you a brief, hopefully brief, presentation on how we did last year through June 26th, and some of the things that we're looking forward to for next school year. Historically, they come in, and there are votes that need to be taken regarding amendments that need to be approved, and maybe pricing changes that need to be approved. But since this is year one of the current contract, you already did that in a prior meeting. And I think Scott and Tracy will give you nothing but good news in terms of pricing. So this is really more of an informational thing tonight with no votes anticipated. So I'll leave it to Scott.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So what we thought we'd do is just run through some of the highlights from this current year, including the financial results as of June, and then we'll talk about, obviously, some of the plans for the upcoming year and pricing, as Joe mentioned earlier. So with that, if you want to talk about some of the things from this year, Tracy?
Some of the highlights. We continued with mandated professional standards, mandated training based on the USDA requirements. Welcome the lunch at the elementary school, where we offer the homemade pizza, fresh garden salad, and a variety of foods, fruits, sorry, included with the visit with Chef Ryan and Luke the Lion. The kids love the characters. This was a big hit for the start of the year. We continued with our Flav's promotion at all schools and offered such items as the homemade Belgian waffles, quinoa burrito bowl, ramen noodle station, and also had themed meals such as turkey dinner, National Beach Cobbler Day. At the elementary school, we continued to involve students in decorating the cafe during the holidays, which creates much excitement. Continue programs such as Lucky Tray Day and Student Appreciation Day. We also added meatless Monday menu options to menus at all grade levels, implemented the shared table at the middle school to reduce the food waste, and we hope to do it at the high school coming up. The elementary, they don't really want to do it due to allergens and stuff with the kids being too little to realize what they can and can't take from the table. And then we added allergen information to the POS systems. So it kind of helps if a kid, you know, grabs something that might not be appropriate for them. The cashier can say, oh, that's, you know, not, you know, something you can eat, you know, you can go get something else or whatever to help the kids out. And revamped the customized website to ADA compliant. And then the financial review through June of 2018. With one less operating day than 2017, meals count increased by 2,455. The total district revenue increased by 19,000 versus the prior year. And return to district as of June 2018 is a 19 surplus increase of 9,000 over the prior year.
Wow, that's great. Nice.
So Tracy did a good job managing, you know, managing really the savings. The savings was in food, food production, waste, menu changes, you know, since I know the last director had retired. So as part of the new contract, some of the things we're planning on for this year, we have an investment amount of money to spend. So at the high school, we're adding an open-air merchandising cooler out where the cashier stations are. Currently, we don't have really anywhere to display, you know, our freight salads, sandwiches, grab-and-go, yogurt parfaits, yogurt smoothies, you know, hummus dipper, prepackaged fresh fruit and vegetable dips, and those types of things. So an open-air cooler will allow us to merchandise those items and hopefully increase sales and come up with some new items for customers in there. At the middle school, we're looking to replace, if you're facing the line, the entire left section of the serving line. It's totally outdated. We can't get parts to repair anything anymore. So the line has been ordered. We don't know if we'll meet the install date before start of school, but we'll get that probably within, you know, September, October. The equipment will be installed. We're also looking at the high school, on seeing if there's an opportunity to move some of our stations around. We seem to have some traffic flow issues depending on what the menu is. So we might move some stations, which are all mobile, and play with it a little bit to see if we can improve, you know, flow and get kids through the line faster there. At the elementary school, we have a center station that's really unused. Currently, it's a hot flat, so to speak. We're looking to replace that with a refrigerated shelf in the center of the serving area. So we do the bagel fun lunch meals, all the cold options. They'll be compliant with the Board of Health in terms of temperature, fresh, cold items, and we'll be able to display them, so the kids will see them. Right now, I don't think they know really what the, what all the options are if they don't see it. The kids obviously eat more with their eyes than what's on the menu, so to speak. We're redoing and refreshing our marketing, which is our signage at the middle school and high school. And it's to coincide with, I'm not sure if you're familiar with our simply-rooted philosophy, but what Woodsons is really focusing on is focusing more on sourcing local items. We, years ago, it was all diverted and processed items from the government. We're looking to, and we have this year significantly decreased the amount of products we diverted to. There still will be chicken patties and chicken nuggets and those types of things. But we're looking to focus more on scratch cooking and more homestyle meals, organic items. We've introduced some organic parfaits. We have organic burritos. We've introduced some of those this year. We plan to source some more items, non-GMO items as well, to get back to our rooted Product samplings, we're going to focus on increasing the amount of product samplings. And this is both with menu items, as well as, we have a Harvest of the Month program, and we partner with the Mass Farm to School. So we subscribe to the Mass Farm to School. And what that is, is we showcase unique and different vegetables and produce at all levels. And there's information cards and information for recipes sometimes for the kids to be educated in terms of what we offer and what there is out there. The other piece is, we're trying to focus on increasing our communication and education through, whether we do it through student newsletters, parent newsletters on a monthly basis, which highlight our program, introduce some of our promotions. We have lesson plans, activity sheets for the elementary level, and really try to get the word out in terms of what we're doing and why we have to do it. I think even though there's been many years since the Healthy Hunger Free Act took place, there's still a lot of folks that don't understand why we use whole grain and certain items to be compliant with the program. The other piece is focusing and partnering with the principals in the schools to try to solicit feedback in terms of menus and what students are looking for. So we did, this past year, we had two online surveys that Woodsons did as a company. It's really a website. Students can use a phone app to take the survey. Unfortunately, and it's not unique to Tingsboro, but we just didn't get any response. I think we got two responses district-wide. So we're looking to see if there's ways to either do customized surveys, whether it's a paper survey and customize it maybe per school. Or in other districts, we've done survey stations where we have, you know, the iPads, and it's a survey kiosk where students can do it during the cafeteria. But we're interested in finding out what kids are looking for. It's not, you know, we've done a good job increasing meal counts and financially, but we want to make sure we maintain participation and don't lose anybody by not offering what they're looking for. And then the last piece is potentially working with the PTO on any events. Again, you know, we meet with them and educate them in terms of what we do in our program and why we do it. And then, you know, open house events or any catered events that they're, you know, interested in doing, we could partner with them to see if we can collaborate more to enhance our program. And then in terms of the budget for this upcoming year, so we are not doing a price increase for fiscal year 1819. As far as the contract goes, the budget, the budgeted district return is a break even, as it's always been. The past years, we've obviously returned a surplus. And then one of the other pieces we look at is the USDA has a targeted lunch equity rate, where they recommend what our paid lunch prices are. So for this coming year, 1819, the target is $2.92. And based on our meal counts, and they're based on every October of the prior year, Tingsboro right now, we're actually in compliance. So our weighted average right now is 291. We anticipate a review from the state, and we're in compliance right now, so there's no need to look at raising prices for the lunch. We will probably look at, in terms of à la carte items, you know, we're always looking at different products to bring in. And as we bring those in, we price those individually, so based on product costs, and then price them accordingly. So other than that, I don't know if there's any questions or any other comments?
I'll open up to the board.
Hi. Great job in increasing the number of meals served. Do you have participation rates broken out by school?
We can get them. I didn't bring them with us, but we have, we can get that data too.
About meals per served, served per hour?
The meals per labor.
Yeah. Just, I mean, obviously, that helps out with us knowing the efficiency that you're running at. As far as your grabbing goes, do you offer that for breakfast at any of the schools?
We don't do a breakfast program in any of the schools, and I know we've looked at that in years past. I think it was prior to me being here.
Right. So we actually, we were running breakfasts for a number of years and losing, big losses at all schools. We stopped breakfast, as you know, the school committee at that time stopped the breakfast program because of the loss of money, and it was actually bringing the lunch program down. Probably about, Dr. Flanagan, maybe about five, six years or so, when Mr. Champa was the principal at the middle school, he thought he saw an opportunity to open up a breakfast at the middle school. We tried it, I think, two or three months, and heavy losses. Breakfast program isn't working.
What attributed to the losses?
Lack of participation. For the amount of labor and food costs to come in, the kids weren't buying anything. And it was probably three months, we ran it on a trial basis and just shut it down after that because there doesn't seem to be an interest in breakfast.
I just, it's just that I obviously get a lot of feedback now, and I'm hearing a lot of very successful programs for grab-and-go for breakfast. Obviously, it's going to be marketed properly, and, you know, three months, I guess, is not a large amount of time to be able to get it, give that program a chance to become successful, especially if you start investing heavily in it in the beginning.
I think too, with the grab-and-go, and you don't want them bringing food into the classrooms, you're sort of leaving a very small window of time. You know, the kids are already here pretty early.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And if the buses are rolling up, they have a very small amount of time to go to the cafeteria, grab something, sit there, eat quick, and get in their classroom. So I think that sort of window of time is part of the problem, certainly on this campus.
Sure.
Yeah, and we're maximizing our time on learning in this particular community, whereas there are some, and I'm not saying other towns and communities aren't, but they have structured their schedule and their school days and their mornings differently. And in many cases, our kids hit the ground running.
I just know that we've got a, or at least from what I had seen in the past, we have a fairly decent amount of kids, not a big amount, but who are tardy on a consistent basis. And you see them walking in with Dunkin' Donuts bags and iced coffees. And I'm just wondering if having something on there might help contribute to lessening that.
Like a Dunkin' in the high school.
A Dunkin', yeah, exactly. I'm sure the teachers union won't have a problem with that.
You'd get us all here early.
So maybe Sophie can confirm this, but I do hear that for the tardy kids carrying in the Dunkin' Donuts, there is a trash barrel at the door that, you know, they don't have them to...
Yeah, that's since changed, yeah.
Yeah. But it's something, if the committee wanted to entertain, something at some point, and maybe through surveys, we could, if we get a little more survey participation, we could see if there is, you know, the times do change. If five years has been enough time, that we can look at it.
Sophia, you're the only one that actually eats these lunches.
Um, actually, I have not. I've had some lunches in a while. My friends do. But I had no idea that they were, there was so much more variety, which is something that, that's good that you guys are trying to like get students' opinions on that. Which I'm part of the student council, and if you guys want to like have helped for outreach to the students...
Absolutely.
...can definitely help market that with our like social media, if you want online students.
Off of the cookie, you'll get all sorts of...
Yeah. Really incentivize it.
And to kind of touch on Rob's, but on the other end of the day, are the grab-and-gos available at the end of the day for any of our kids that are going on sports trips or after-school programs or any of that stuff?
See, that's an interesting concept, because our kids are on buses for hours, hour and a half after school for games and whatnot.
So we've done, and not that we can't, you know, not that we can't try it here, but we've done after-school programs. I have 12 districts. We've done them in four of them, and they're just not successful. Based on, and it's, you know, I'm talking about successful based on, you know, financial impact and cost. So, I mean, we've had districts, and same thing with athletics, you know, inside, but we've run snack bars, which are offering grab-and-go salads, you know, parfaits, sandwiches, beverages, and that type of thing. Within a two-hour period, you know, we've had revenue of like $20, which doesn't really cover the cost of labor and anything else. So, but I think it depends on the district. It's not, it's something that we could, you know, we could try.
If it's a high school thing, yeah.
I would think like sandwich wraps.
Yeah.
Right. I don't see a salad on the way to my face. I don't see a salad on the way to my face.
But, you know, a fruit cup or something quick that I could eat on the bus on the way there, just because I know I'm not gonna eat till seven o'clock tonight when I get home. But that's just a thought, I don't know what would be available or what the cost would be, even if it was just something out there, but.
And with those.
I think it starts with information. We need to, we need to.
See what the kids want.
Pull on both, see, pull the kids and see if that's something we'd wanna go down that road.
You mentioned something about catering for events, do you have a catering menu or?
We do have a catering menu.
Yeah, we do.
So if you make that available to some of the.
We do use Witsens for, we do use Witsens for a lot of our professional development, back to school, we go through them a lot of.
Even the plays and different things that, you know, when the kids are here all night, the plays, there's parents always coming in, trying to bring food into, you know, those types of things. And the farm-to-table stuff, are you using any local farms?
We have a list, and I can provide it, but we have a list, it's probably close to twenty farms in the mass area that we partner with. We use Costa, is a major supplier, but the produce, you know, the produce is distributed through Costa and then it comes with our deliveries. So we're very focused on local, we don't really, you know, we have to follow the Buy American Act obviously as well, so everything is made in the USA, and we're focused as much local products as we can. And that's one of the, you know, that's one of the initiatives that Witsens has right now is even manufactured products or, you know, canned goods, dried goods, is trying to source them more locally. So that's, that's an initiative that our purchasing department's working on.
One of the things I would think would be beneficial for a school system is, you know, in the elementary school, for example, if there was a field trip where, you know, these are the products that we're getting, that you're eating, and being able to take a field trip to a local farm and explaining how they grow. I mean, that's something I think would be a good learning experience for an elementary school. I don't know if any of the farms that you're talking about, you know, I know Parley Farms and Tingsborough has people coming in all the time, I don't know if they're on the list or if any, any of the farms on the list have those types of programs where they can, you know, accommodate a field trip of schools to come into.
Yeah, we could collaborate with, you know, the school and the principals and the farms, and if they're willing to do that, I know we've done it, you know. I think some will and some, you know, don't for other reasons, but.
That would be an opportunity, I guess, to look at who your vendors are gonna be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you both for coming out.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
If I could just finish up with Scott and Tracy. Tracy's first year here was a huge success, I think. She did a great job. A sign of our partnership with Witsens is Tracy actually was in line to start a year earlier, but our previous food service director hadn't retired yet. And Scott and I had this tuck her away, tuck her away somewhere, she's perfect for this district. And Witsens did manage to find a home for Tracy for a year while, while we're waiting for Sue to finish up her last year. So certainly, I was thankful for Scott to, after seeing Tracy here for a year, very thankful that he tucked her away for a year waiting for us. So it's been a very successful year and very thankful for their work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
All right, back to our regular scheduled program. Number three, correspondence.
At this time.
Visitors, comments, and questions. Seeing them, share the success.
All right. The Tingsborough knowledgeable team won the regional championship, bringing home the title now two times in three years, which is pretty impressive, I didn't know about. TES hosted their annual celebration of learning to highlight projects made by students throughout the year. TMS hosted the annual eighth grade semi-formal dance. At the end of June, TES fifth graders and TMS eighth graders each had their own moving on ceremony and graduation. The first annual student appreciation day was hosted by the THS Student Council on Pierce Field, as a chance for students to relax before finals. And TMS Theater received four awards for their fifteen Met Musical Award nominations for set, lighting, acting ensemble, and overall production. And that's it.
Perfect, thank you.
It's quiet in the summer.
Subcommittee updates, any other policy?
Yep, we, tonight we met and we reviewed three policies. The first one's policy four point one-two, which is the electronic communication device policy. And we looked it over and decided to remove it because we currently do not follow this policy. So that is in your Dropbox, right? Is that one in there too, so you can look at it, see what it is, what they removed? And then the second policy we looked at was policy six point six, which is a first read. This is the Tingsborough Public School Policy on Multi-Function School Activity Bus. So this is also in your Dropbox for you to look at and do a first read, and then we will be reviewing it next time as a second read, correct? And then the last policy we looked at is the Responsible Use of Information Technology for Students and Staff. This is policy three point one-one and four point one-one, and it's a, it's been rewritten and combined. So we want you to read through it carefully, ask, you know, add any suggestions, and review it for a first read, and then the next meeting will be a second read. So that's it. Any questions?
I think we need to.
We need to do a vote on the first read.
Well, we need to go through the committee. Did we vote on all these?
There's still some changes to be made to those policies.
Yep.
So we're reviewing them right now.
We're still reviewing them, if you wanna look in your, in the box, and if you have any comments or questions, the reason why four point one-two was dropped was because it's gonna be incorporated in three point one-one and four point one-one. And it does the, procedures aren't being followed as times have changed, policy needs to be updated.
So we don't need any motions on that?
No motions or votes.
Perfect, thank you very much. To our subcommittee, personnel, there's a few, few items here.
July, I mean, always seems to be a lot of action, Mr. Chair, so we have notification appointments, we have four new power professionals at Tingsborough Elementary School, Fallon Fantasia, Taylor Morash, Brooke Schultz, and Amy Turkott. As we know, we approved a point five nurse for this campus who will kind of serve a district-wide role. We're pleased to hire Kristen Erickson in that position. We do have two retirees, Mr. Finnegan, the assistant principal of Tingsborough Middle School, will retire from Massachusetts. And Mr. Adams, who has been a staple at the high school for a long time, is also retiring effective September fourth. We did receive two notifications of resignations at the end of the year, Meg Richard at the elementary school and Kristen Roberts at the elementary school. And we also received a request for leave of absence from Mr. Ryan at the high school. So those are all the personnel decisions at this point, actions at this point.
Unfinished business, superintendent evaluation, I am still in the process of putting that together with Julie and Mike. I was hoping to have some other information available to us, but that's not available as of yet. So I'm going to move that, we will have another subcommittee meeting to finalize that, wrap that up. I will get with Ms. Faribankson, put that notification out as to when, and then we can put that to bed.
Great.
We already did eight B.
Eight B, eight B we're on.
Oh, eight B, I'm sorry, we're on that one. I thought we were gonna skip that and do that last. Mr. Guthrie was having such a good time over there, I didn't wanna interrupt him.
So Mr. Guthrie's gonna join us, Mr. Chair, as you know, I believe about a month ago, I informed the committee of the many projects that were going on this summer, so Ryan's here, I think his head is not spinning tonight, so he's gonna just provide us an update on some of the bigger projects, and if we have questions, he's here to answer any of those questions.
Good evening, Ryan Guthrie, I'm your new facilities director, as many of you know. Bunch of projects going on this summer, most exciting, district-wide, we have the Pierce Field turf replacement project. Myself, Mr. Flanagan, our AD, Annie Palumbo, John Amad, our designer, been working very hard to kind of get this thing up and running, very short approval process and deadlines to meet, you know, we wanna try to get this thing dialed in before the start of the fall season, impact, you know, the sports as least as we can. So we are through the design and shop drawing process on the fields. We actually opened up contractor installation bids tomorrow, so we will be, you know, selecting a contractor immediately. So we're hoping to get that up and running in August and completed it first, third week in September, if everything goes correctly and goes smooth.
Just one point to piggy on that, Ann Palumbo, Ms. Palumbo, our athletic director, has strategically, to the best of her ability, strategically scheduled games so that we have as many on-the-road games as possible, so that we minimize the impact to our kids' home contests.
And do we have a plan for practices and that stuff, 'cause I know usually those teams come in before the school year starts?
We do, we're gonna go right out here on what we used to call Lambo Field, and we use the elementary school as well. So we have contingency plans in place, it's a matter of picking a designer, seeing what the bids come in at, and really lighting a fire and saying, let's go.
Yeah, we're in touch with Shaw Turf now, we're, you know, we're on board with them, shop drawings are done, and I mean, we're rolling this thing into production, you know, next week, you know, as they're producing the field, turf itself, you know, we'll be demoing the field out here, regrading, things of that nature. If it goes smooth, turf will show up, you know, as soon as that's done, and we'll lay the carpet down and we'll be back in action, so. That's the biggest, most exciting thing going on. Tingsborough High, as you all know, we've been working on a solar project here, Select Solar, they, as of last week, got approvals on their size design, they're actually in the process of permitting now, so we hope to have that started in August. That's it on the high school, they do have plans.
Do we know what installation timeframe is on that?
So the sizing just got kind of changed around a little bit, so I have not yet, I met with their project manager maybe three weeks ago, and they were making some changes, so as far as the field size goes, I don't know, they were talking a two to three-week installation time, so we're, you know, we're, we're still in that phase where they just got through, just as last week, had approved on their actual size of their, of the build, so.
Was it increased or decreased?
It was decreased very slightly. Only because we have mechanical issues on the roof. Typically, when they plan these projects, they'll use Google Earth and things of that nature to kind of present an initial scope of work until they can come out and kind of field measure, structural design, things of that nature, kind of then, you know, design a platform that will work on each building. So for the most part, it, I don't think it's shrunk much. High school, any questions on solar or turf?
Will they be able to get, I guess the biggest problem would be getting the panels to the roof, they be able to get that done in a week or so?
Yeah, I mean, that's all, you know, we'll work on the staging of that and, you know, everything's gonna be craned up, you know, unfortunately, yeah, at the same time, we will be doing a turf field, so staging and logistics are gonna be.
As long as it's done in August, I guess, before the last week in August, you get the panels up there, then all the.
Yeah, which is, which is the hope, and I don't think they're gonna run into much snags as far as permitting, so, you know, they've been in touch with me, you know, we do hope, a lot of these projects unfortunately are starting in August, just timeframe is how things have laid out, but, you know, I would think first to second week in August, we should at least be booming panels up and getting things off the ground.
I know we're not gonna meet for another month, but I would suggest in two weeks or so, I'll get an update from Ryan on where we are, kind of send an email to the entire committee saying, here's what we have with Culver, here's what we have with Select, here's what we have with Field, particularly the bigger projects, 'cause I know we're not gonna be back together for a time being, so I'll send an email in two weeks, just to let you know exactly where we are. I think, I think by then, we should have a better idea of.
Uh, yeah, we definitely should, I mean, if, once they have permit in hand, I can't see why they can't give us, you know, lock down a date with us.
Was the turf field, did we buy the turf or?
We did purchase the turf through a co-op as a savings to the community, so we did purchase that.
Available and ready to go, or is it?
It's, so we are, it, we did hold off to, to be honest, that the actual production will be starting in the next week or so, 'cause we didn't wanna put the cart before the horse. Wanna make sure we can lock down a contractor that can perform the work in the timeframe we have, we obviously didn't wanna have turf produced for us and sit in holdings somewhere. But we have gone through, you know, through the steps of dealing with Shaw and our designers to say, hey, if this all goes right, can we get this produced? And they have no problems, they've committed to us, so, as a last-minute deadline to get this field produced on their end, so.
It's two and a half weeks to, two and a half to three weeks to fabricate the turf field, and they have our design ready to go, it's a matter of hit and start on the project, so.
Yeah, literally tomorrow.
Once we open those bids tomorrow, we'll get a sense of, you know, and I gotta, we're confident the bids are gonna be acceptable.
Moving on, Tingsborough Middle School, ADA compliant bathroom renovation over there, you know, just the need that we have in the school system, so we will be converting our classroom into an ADA compliant bathroom. That one's pretty cut and dry. Elementary school, we've got four different projects going over there. We have daycare facility that we have now shut down, we're gonna be moving the Bridges classes into that facility. Minor construction to take place, petitions and things of that nature, not a huge project, but one that's on our radar. We do have a couple doors that need to be replaced over there, just life expectancy type things, you know, big dollar amounts, though. Will also coincide with a key phob system, you know, for security reasons, obviously, so we can secure the building as much as possible for obvious safety reasons. As Mike talked earlier, we'll be trying to reuse some of the remediation money that's still available from the school for, you know, these repairs to the doors and things of that nature. We do have an elevator piston replacement we're doing over there. Again, just a professional recommendation throughout the years, through our inspections and whatnot, that, you know, this is a preventive maintenance type issue, it's pretty, it's a pretty big project, but it's one of those that needs to kind of get done, and we're gonna try to maintain as much as we can, you know.
Which elevator, back one or the front?
It'd be the front elevator in the main lobby.
Okay.
That's about it over at the Elementary Valley Collaborative, we have a capital improvement project that's been underway, that's a pretty major project. We awarded the bid, the design contract to La Valley Brenzinger a month or so back. They've been working pretty hard to get us some initial drawings, I met with them, we had a kickoff meeting on July eleventh, which we kind of laid out a calendar of how the next step should proceed come August thirteenth to twenty-fourth. Valley shuts down for those two weeks, we're gonna put boots on the ground out there for design of the HVAC systems and heating systems while the children are, you know, occupying the space. That design will then dictate how we design the windows and doors to kind of work as a complete building envelope to, you know, control heating and AC. So at that point, yeah, we're in design with those guys, we do look to have something within, so August thirteenth, September, we should have the design from them, and we're gonna go out to bid for kind of, for a winter project at least, for the HVAC heating portion of it. Partly in a recommendation from La Valley to try to get someone that's, you know, willing to work with us more on a, you know, cost level where we can put it out over the winter and hopefully save a little bit of money. So those guys have been working pretty good with us to try to control our costs and try to get this project done and completed in a timely fashion, so. That's it on my end, any questions on any of the projects?
I'll open it up to the board.
So what to do?
There's a ton going on.
Yes, welcome to Tingsborough. What are you doing with your spare time?
I'm coming to these meetings.
So Ryan, Ryan has seamlessly transitioned into the role and done a great job. There is a lot of work going on and there are a lot of moving parts, and, you know, we do appreciate that George Triax is always one phone call away, and he's done a great job transitioning Ryan, so I think, I think we're in good shape, and, you know, as you talked about with Valley Brenzinger, that certainly segues into AC, if I can keep talking there, 'cause one of the things we talked about, the Lakeview lease, is Valley Collaborative potentially front-loading some capital money to us so that we can tackle these projects and not wait until we've accumulated enough lease money to tackle that. So the Lakeview lease is in your drive, it's there for your review. As you know, we had our attorney drafted for us, we sent it to La Valley's attorney, Tom went to look at, he made a. He made a couple of minor revisions, nothing substantial, nothing significant, and we're going to send it back to our attorney for one final, one final look at. So, I guess what we look to do is, we can do two things, one of two things, we can either say, bring it to the August meeting, or you can say we can take action and authorize the chair to sign it once it's been vetted by our attorney final time. Again, the caveat in there is, Valley Collaborative is going to take over janitorial services and custodians, and they are going to front-load some of the lease money. So, it's a pretty, it's a pretty neat way for us to really improve that facility over the next 10 years.
Could you just touch on for our friends at home?
Sure.
What other capital asset things that we are going to be doing in that building that will be paid for by the lease agreement and by Valley Collaborative matching?
Sure. So, so basically, the large statement is $1.6 million of revenue will go into the Lakeview School at no cost to a Tingsboro resident. Through a collaborative process of a 10-year lease agreement with Valley Collaborative, Valley Collaborative is going to apportion $800,000 for capital improvement. Tingsboro Public Schools will portion $800,000 of our lease intake towards that school, which will still leave the Tingsboro Public Schools $800,000 for capital improvements on our own buildings. So, $1.6 million into Lakeview School. The big projects we're looking at are certainly new windows for the school, HVACs for the school, and we're looking at new paving and landscaping and kind of beautifying the outside of the school as well. Those are three big things, and the other thing was electrical. Electrical upgrades throughout the school. Again, it's a 1950 building that has two outlets in every room, so the panel can't handle that, so we need to do that. So, aesthetically, it's going to be a much nicer-looking school with upgrades throughout, so we're excited about that.
Are they doing a camera system in there?
Yes, security cameras is part of it, yes. So, there was about $25,000 worth of educational upgrades, security cameras being part of that, a playground being part of that, things like that.
Okay.
Is it going to be locked?
Yes, it'll be, they'll have their, they'll be on a fog system as well, yep, absolutely, absolutely.
And the reason I asked you to do that also is, we have a lot of buildings in town. This particular building will be refurbished almost 100% over 10 years at absolutely no cost to the residents of the town of Tingsboro.
Well...
Someone.
We're all paying taxes to support Valley Collaborative.
Yes, exactly. But we don't have to borrow to get this worked on. We have an occupied building that's not deteriorating.
Which is still a viable, functioning school with...
In the event that...
The right, the right systems in place.
Right. I think the key thing is, and as Mike and I have talked, Mr. Superintendent, we've talked, the money that will come from the lease to maintain these schools is, you know, invaluable. We can, we can put together plans to maintain these buildings instead of letting them go, and we have funding there, so, I mean, I think that money is...
Well, it's a great partnership with Valley Collaborative. I think that they, they're winning and we're winning, so it's worked out well.
Absolutely.
So, I'd like to thank Dr. Flanagan for all his work on putting this whole program together.
Regarding the lease, I read through it, the only concern I had on the lease was the, it wasn't clear that the capital improvements were the property of the town of Tingsboro. It's obvious, you know, windows aren't going to go anywhere but cameras, for example.
Okay.
You know, some, some things that may...
Okay. So, the school and its contents?
Right. And, what was the other thing? I was just concerned about some of the termination language. It, I felt like if something happened in the future that, you know, not in the near term, but in six, seven, eight years of the lease, you know, we would be responsible for a lot of things that I don't think we should be, because it should be prorated, I guess.
Right, so that was the new language that their attorney put in, which is why it's going back to our attorney.
Okay, so it's, some of the stuff needs to be prorated.
Right.
Those come back, I have no problem. The monies and things, the timing of the monies works out well.
Right.
You know, it doesn't even look like we'd have to, the town would have to borrow for any of the work that needs to be done.
No, that's, that's the goal, that's the real hope.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and too, it gives us the ability to future plan, and we know that, we know the funds are coming, we can now develop a maintenance schedule on other buildings, which is, you know, to me is huge. And unfortunately, I think even George Triakis would agree, over the years, you know, he's been handcuffed to not being able to maintain certain aspects because there's, you know, lack of money, lack of funding, so, I mean, with, you know, with, myself and Superintendent can get together and say, "Listen, this is what needs to get done." You know, we can, we can pre-plan. If it's one year, two year, three year, you know, we can start planning some of these large investments that need to be taken, so, I mean, at the end of the day, that's, that's the end-all, be-all, as far as I can see with the, with the lease and the, and working with Valley over there.
Going back to turf fields, it's kind of connected. Is there going to be a maintenance program for that so that the new turf field will be kept up? Because I know that was a problem.
Yes, so, so we regularly maintain the field and groom the field, this current field, and to be honest, our guys have done such a great job with it now. There is a regular maintenance schedule to it, you know, they've pushed that field to 12 years. Really, the expiration date on it was eight, so we've gotten everything we can get out of that field. It's kind of comical to have guys walk on this particular field, contractors that have looked at it, because they've never seen a field so played on so hard, because we do have, you know, so many multiple sports on it, so many other, you know, not just the high school, the schools, the, you know, the amount of athletics that are, that are on the field, that it's actually lasted that long. So, you know, kudos to our maintenance staff that's out there already, that's, that's kept it up. It would be further discussion, though, that we should, you know, you know, talk about in the future as far as, you know, there is a shelf life to these fields, they're eight to 10 years, so it's something that we should consider, you know, a five-year plan, you know, maybe five years from now, we start funding, you know, sticking money aside to, you know, the fields will have to be replaced and it is...
I think another important conversation that needs to happen is the track. I think that came out loud and clear at town meeting, that there's a desire in this community that we need to do something with that track. So, I'm sure that'll come out of our capital asset subcommittee, as we have conversations about that, because I think we heard that loud and clear.
And we did have budget talks about...
We did. We've had a lot of conversation about it.
Putting money aside for this 10-year...
I think you'll have more talks about the track once the new field's out there, too, because I don't think people are going to want to see a brand-new field and an old track, so I think the discussion's going to come pretty quick.
I think so, too.
And there was a lot of talk about the maintenance of this field and that we just didn't do any.
Right.
It lasted for 12 years.
We did maintain it.
It's got an eight-year shelf life, eight-year warranty, 10-year shelf life. We did our maintenance. We made it last for 12 years, so for those people who, who stated that there was no maintenance performed on this field, we didn't have the right equipment to maintain it, or whatever, and I heard a lot of those myself personally, it lasted for 12 years, four years longer than it was supposed to, so I think that kind of the monks at Hall theory. So, kudos to, like Brian said, Mr. Guthrie said, and to George Triakis and his group. They maintained that field for 12 years.
You know, in this process, I've spoke to a lot of facilities directors at other schools, and they're shocked by, a lot of these, a lot of these turf fields, they put them in, the football runs on them, soccer, lacrosse, that's it, you know, or one sport, you know, we're running five, six sports at a time. The field's constant. I mean, and going over planning, when we could redo this field was, you know, a nightmare because there's constantly kids on it. Mr. Flanagan did not want to see any senior, you know, potentially lose their last year not being able to play at home, so, you know, we're trying to squeeze this thing in at the last minute for all those reasons, but, yeah, I mean, that, that field's got well overplayed and even from a design standpoint, the amount of lines and the amount of numbers and things that you probably don't notice that are on these fields that, that no other schools have, you know, it might be a designated soccer field, football field, this, this field gets played on. These guys have really maintained this field, so.
Just imagine what the cost would be if it was grass.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And to those out there that think grass is any cheaper, you know, the bill to water these lawns and whatnot, you know, we're talking $30,000, $40,000 a year to keep these grass fields going, so it's no, you know, it's no savings to have grass out there, so.
Yeah.
It's quite an expense, so.
Good.
Thanks.
So, Dr. Flanagan put out two options. One would be that we wait till our next meeting to sign, once we hear back from Attorney Long, or the other would be to allow me to sign it, once we hear back from Attorney Long.
So, I would... Make a motion to accept the lease with Attorney Long's positive endorsement of it.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion, actually?
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
You know, to Paul's point earlier in this, I, myself, I would feel more comfortable waiting to see any recommendations that he makes first to the separation parts. I didn't feel really comfortable reading those myself. I'd like to see what he says first and, and hear it first before we, before we recommend signing it.
What's the downside to waiting?
What's the downside of waiting? There's not a lot. I mean, we're holding out, we can't do any LaValle Brenzinger planning officially until we commit the lease, you know, so that would just delay all our meetings with LaValle Brenzinger.
What do we have a timeframe for his response, do you think?
Um, usually pretty quick. I mean, if I put it out to Leslie...
Let's put it this way, can we have a meeting to just review, to sign, sign the lease? Just at one...
Could a copy of the updates be available?
One item agenda.
I can certainly make a copy, the update's available.
That makes more sense. What if, yeah, once the updated copy is, then could he put it into the drive for review and then...
Allow feedback on it and once...
I'm just one vote.
Yeah, no, no.
It's just a concern, you know, so...
I would defer to Tony to, if there's something more than what is...
What if we put out the updates from Mr. Long? If everyone replies back to Dr. Flanagan that we're satisfied? If we're not, then we'll wait till the next meeting and we'll run it up again.
Does that actually constitute a vote?
It was a...
It would, because if we voted on it tonight, that that was the course that we chose to take.
But would be voting on it again, though, you know, giving an approval on something?
Right. Well, my signature would be based on your approval.
So, why don't we just table to August?
Yeah, all right. We can do that.
I don't want, I don't want to delay anything with this, obviously, it's, how comfortable are you?
Our attorney drafted it.
No, I understand.
Our attorney drafted it, went to their attorney, so now it's getting, how comfortable am I?
But you said that they were, that their attorney added those separation items at the end.
I'm, I'm very comf, I'm very comfortable, I'm very comfortable in the fact that I serve on the Valley Board, I work with Tom Went, and that our attorney drafted the document, so I work with both attorneys in different capacities.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor, let's get back to, so, there's a motion on the floor to allow them to sign the, allow the...
Allow the chair to sign the lease.
Proven, sign the lease. That doesn't mean that the chair has to sign the lease. If there's a question or comment, and I'm sure that the chair will communicate with the committee if something more is...
Okay, fine.
Okay, yep, that would be...
I would...
I knew that, and I wasn't questioning Tony's, you know, judgment on this, I just, I want to make sure that we're all comfortable with it first, because...
Four to one vote.
Okay, go ahead.
If I, if I may.
No, it's not going to be four to one.
I want it on the record, I want it on the record that...
Well, we haven't actually voted on it yet.
No, it's just I wanted to have a discussion on this, I wanted to hear some more opinions on this, and if, if everyone else is comfortable, then fine, okay, I will agree with that, all right.
So, may I have a motion? May I have it seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's five zero zero.
Okay.
Got it.
I should let it do it.
Lost over the discussion period.
Yeah, I know, you didn't want to give me a...
Lost over the discussion period.
Didn't want to give me a darn discussion period.
I bought myself, though, didn't I?
You did.
I bought it back.
Get to finance.
Yeah, let's get to, I'm all worried about finance.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, appreciate it.
Thank you, Guthrie, thank you very much. Good luck with all these projects. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This being your sort of crossover between FY '18 and FY '19, and the timing of your previous meeting, signing of bills has actually grown into three different items that are in your drive. The first item is the signing of bills on June 26th. That is the 16 warrants that Mr. Mullin came in as one of your single signers and signed on your behalf, so those warrant numbers, accounts and amounts are in there and have been submitted to Town Hall for processing. Next one is the signing of the warrants dated June 30th, which are actually the final FY ' '18 warrants here tonight. There were nine of those, warrant numbers, accounts and amounts. Lastly, there is the first two warrants for fiscal '19 dated today and signed tonight. Those are also in your drive for signing of bills. Signing of payroll has grown to two items in your drive. The first one is the final three payrolls for FY '18 that are in there, as well as the first payroll dated July 9th for FY '19. Lastly, you have a document for 11C, which is the fringe benefit chargebacks from Town Hall. Town Hall every year now does journal entries to charge back the staff to the various tuition base programs, as well as the custodial people at the Lakeview School. That has not changed, it went up $400 from $147,002 to $147,006. Since these are accounts under YAR purview, you need to make a motion to accept those before she can do the journal entry, so I would ask the committee make a motion to accept.
I will seek a motion to approve the fringe benefit allocations to the tuition programs for the Lakeview lease.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, it's five zero zero.
That's it for finance.
School committee discussion. We'll start with Ms. Faribault.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm fantastic, thank you very much.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
I'm good to go.
I'm very excited about the turf field and the track, hopefully afterwards, even though it won't be when I'm in high school, but that's exciting, that was, that's it.
Excellent. Ms. Messina?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Well, excited about all the projects, hopefully they get done this summer, but I'm sure that we'll have to deal with it as they come.
It's going to be an exciting September, I think.
All right, Ryan? Did you look at the calendar? The kids are back in school next month. Summer's already over.
Oh, stop.
It's definitely not over.
Six more weeks can go by fast.
You're talking to production people.
So, you know, my only comment would be, you know, I think, I think you saw it tonight, Ryan's done a great job of assimilating himself to Tingsboro Public Schools, he's working very hard, and he's got a lot thrown around, and he's done a great job managing, so we're very fortunate, I think we found a great hire there.
Agreed. Well, let's enjoy the summer, I think everybody's graduation parties went successful, I think, so congratulations to all those kids and their families for getting through this process. A couple more weeks, she'll be back in school.
Yeah.
Exciting, Ryan can't wait.
Six is not a couple.
Yeah, it's not a couple.